Organization and the Transportation Technical Committee, sponsors Mayor County. Regular items, item 38B has been added as a final consideration of the ordinance above, waiver requested by the applicant and requires six votes.
Removed.
Those in favor say aye.
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 Item three is approving the consent agenda, items three through thirty-two. We have item four F, Coleman votes no. Four Q, Coleman votes no. Four W, Gatto claims a conflict of interest. Six, A, B, and C, Coleman wishes to speak. Eleven C, Manabon has a conflict of interest. Item twenty-two, Gatto has a conflict of interest. And item twenty-four, Gray votes no. Do you hear a motion?
I'll move it.
We take a roll call?
I think we got it well.
Yep.
Aye.
Motion passes. First one we have is item six, Councilmember Coleman, you wish to speak?
Thank you. Item six shows up on our agenda often as a list of things that we're starting construction on. There's also other contracts that we have on our agenda tonight. One of the things that we've routinely done since we have the benefit of the citizens approving the one cent sales tax is to report out what we're doing on it. At tonight's agenda, again, these numbers seem to have been staggering all summer, fall, and that winter. We are spending ten point eight million dollars, city funds, taxpayer funds, on road improvements, sewer improvements, and bridge improvements to make sure that we're safe and that our roads are well taken care of. Ten point eight million dollars tonight. And, you know, unfortunately, we've read a lot about, and heard a lot of people kind of bark and squeal about roads and so forth. Every meeting, we've spent in the millions of dollars, a process that's unprecedented in the city, and it started long ago, as we started the planning almost two years ago. The first time we went to it, the sales tax, remember, the citizens of Des Moines approved it, we got vetoed by the suburbs, and then when we were able to plan it. But in that time, we've had this planned, and I'm really proud. Every meeting, it seems like the number is five, six million dollars. Tonight, it's ten point eight million dollars. So, I'll move item six. I'll include A, B, and C, I'm not sure what got included in the consent.
We have to separate those out or just make them A, B, and C?
It's A and B.
Okay. It's been moved.
Aye.
Yes.
Did you vote?
It takes care of the consent agenda.
Chris's vote didn't get registered. Did it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Seven yes.
Seven yes. Item thirty-five, amending chapter sixty-two of the municipal code relating to human rights and the procedure for processing complaints. Council Communications number nineteen dash five twenty-three. A is final consideration of ordinance above, waiver requested by Joshua Barr, Civil and Human Rights Department Director, and requires six votes. B is approving amended rules and regulations of the Civil and Human Rights Commission regarding subcommittees and appeals of ministerial and administrative case closures. Who wants to speak on that?
I'll move thirty-five A and B.
As we're voting, I want to commend the work that's being done by Joshua and the Civil and Human Rights Commission. I know it's hard work, and we have more discussing to do, but I commend them for sticking to it. We need to show all of our citizens that we represent everybody, no matter who they are, where they are, country of origin, whatever. Thank you to all them. I vote aye.
Mr. Coleman? Linda?
Six, zero. Motion carries.
Should be seven with the mayor.
Or seven, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Thank you. Item thirty-six, review of the zoning board of adjustment decision granting a variance from separation requirements to allow thirty-one oh four University Avenue, Come and Go L.C. to sell liquor, wine, and beer. Would choose one alternative, A, B, or C? Council Communication number nineteen dash five oh eight. A is the city council remands decision in order to the zoning board of adjustment for further study. The effective date of the board's decision will be deferred for thirty days from the date of this remand. B is the city council takes no action to review the decision in order. The decision of the board will become final on December twenty-third, 2019. Or C, the city council declines to remand the decision to the zoning board of adjustment. The decision of the board becomes final on this date. Anybody wants to speak on this matter?
Seeing none, I'll move thirty-six C.
Thirty-six B?
C.
C, okay. That's one I would have followed, too. Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm thirty-seven. Oh, wait, we got a chance there. We have a slight recess here, folks. Hearings don't start until five o'clock. We got about twenty minutes to wait, so we can have a little quiet time.
That's all we have, boss? Okay.
What happened?
So efficient.
I didn't want to hit.[400.12]
It's 5 o'clock, we're gonna start to open the hearings here.
We're ready to go.
All right. Item 37, on vacation of segments of East 3rd Street, East Walnut Street, and alley right-of-way adjoining 304 East Walnut Street, and conveyance of a permanent easement for subsurface building encroachment on city-owned property to Swaps Cash LLC for $8,000. A is the first consideration of the ordinance, B is the final consideration of the ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Do we have anybody here to speak on that?
I see none. Mayor Protem, I will move item 37A and B.
Mayor?
And the mayor votes aye.
Seven yes. Motion carry.
Item 38 is on vacation of segments of Tuttle Street and Southwest 12th Street right-of-way and conveyance of a permanent easement for airspace above city-owned property and a permanent easement for subsurface building encroachment on city-owned property to Fusion Apartments LLC for $6,650. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, B is the final consideration of the ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anybody here to speak on that?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'll move 38A and 38B.
Mayor?
Aye.
Seven yes. Motion carry.
Item 39, on vacation of the east-west alley right-of-way located north of and adjoining 1821 Ingersoll, in conveyance to Lutheran Church of Hope, $28,000. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, B is the final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anybody here to speak on that?
Seeing none, I'll move 39A and 39B.
Mayor?
Aye.
Seven yes. Motion carry.
Item 40, on vacation of the east-west alley right-of-way located south of and adjoining 3104 University Avenue, and conveyance to Come and Go LC, $22,660. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, B is the final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anybody here to speak on that?
Seeing none, I'll move 40A and 40B. I'll also add, you know, we've talked in conjunction with this specific project about the Merrill Building. I know there's been continued effort to look into that. I think it's gonna be tough based on what we've seen and the cost. There might be a couple other land options that might be cheaper, but I don't think that would close all of the costs it needs to be.
It's a lot.
Yeah. So appreciate the fact that you've continued to work and think through this, and maybe there's a Hail Mary out there somewhere, but if not, we'll keep things moving.
But just to clarify, because I'm really impressed at the effort made by you and Come and Go, the neighbors, preservationists, to look for a way. But does it, the way we left the last time, does it require additional action from the council, or we're able to move forward?
We're able to move forward.
Perfect.
We just asked them to do their diligence.
Yep. And I'm, I think you characterized it right that... Mayor? We've been regularly updated, and it's hard to do.
Yeah. I appreciate everybody's effort to look at various options on this. This is a good example of not only historical fabric of our city, but a piece of property that unfortunately, when it's moved, it will be moved out of the, probably the affordability price range, but this is a piece that would be, you know, sort of that missing middle kind of a piece. And these are the kinds of projects that we ought to look to have to aid in densification along important corridors like university, that is close to university, close to public transportation, and has all the positive aspects. So I do hope that there is continued look. I realize that it's gonna be tough, but I think we owe it to our citizens, we owe it to history, we owe it to affordable housing. So I'll vote aye.
It got a little happy on the display, so it's not there anymore, but the vote is seven zero, so it's carried.
Thank you, Carrie. Item 41, on vacation of the north-south alley right-of-way located east of and adjoining 2944 Des Moines Street, and conveyance to Greater Iowa Credit Union for $4,290. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, B is the final consideration of the ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anybody here to speak on that?
I see none. I'll move 41A and B.
Mayor?
Aye.
Seven yes. Motion carry.
42, on conveyance of a permanent easement for airspace above city-owned property in a 13-foot by 41-foot segment of vacated north-south alley right-of-way located west of and adjoining 1011 Locust Street to the Temple Partners LP for $100. Is anybody here to speak on that?
Seeing none, I'll move item 42.
Has it been moved?
Aye.
Seven yes. Motion carry.
Item 43, on conveyance of excess city-owned property acquired as part of the 2018 Limited Voluntary Flood Buyout located at 2617 48th Place to Brent Millis for side yard purposes only, $250. Is there anybody here to speak on that?
I'll move item 43.
Aye.
Seven yes. Motion carry.
Item 44, on request from River Point West LLC to amend the PUD conceptual plan for 205 Southwest 11th Street to allow the development of a three-story office building with 68,000 square feet of office and 4,500 square feet of restaurant space with associated surface parking. Is anybody here to speak on this?
I'll move item 44.
Mayor?
Aye.
Seven yes. Motion carry.
Item 45, on request from the Iowa Labor's Education and Training Trust Fund to amend the PUD conceptual plan for property in the vicinity of 4500 Hubbell Avenue to allow development of 7.12 acres to be developed with a building for a training center and equipment storage, as well as an outdoor training site. Is there anybody here to speak on this item?
I will proudly move item 45, and I just have to comment. I know they're here in the audience, and, but I just want to say how happy we are that they've chosen the spot that they did in Ward 2. This will be a new building, you're gonna bring people in that will be training at the facility. It's good for our neighborhoods, it's good for our community. So with that, I'll move item 45.
Yeah. I'd like to add one other thing that is exciting about this, and that it'd be great if more people would replicate. It's training for good jobs on a transit corridor too, which is part of how you build opportunity for everyone in the community.
It's a great place, great location.
So...
And a great group that runs it.
Absolutely.
Well, and let me add to that, as I vote in favor of it, I want to say and second everything that Linda and Josh have said. This is about a future in a stable job, in a trade where people can earn a living wage, have the support of their union brethren to train, be ready to have a life, a career, and with expectations that they can enjoy everything that all other people can enjoy. So thank you to the laborers, and thank you to the city council. I think this is a huge move for Des Moines and for our citizens and for the future.
Linda?
Thank you. Move item 45.
Your vote, Mayor?
Aye.
Seven yes. Motion carry.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item 46, items regarding amendments to the zoning ordinance. A, to amend the existing Plan DSM, creating our Tomorrow Plan Future Land Use designation from industrial to neighborhood mixed use, 3851 Delaware Avenue. B, hearing on amendments to zoning ordinance, planning and design ordinance, and citywide zoning map. C is the first consideration of amendments to the zoning ordinance. D is the first consideration of amendments to the planning and design ordinance. And E is the first consideration of amendments to the citywide zoning map. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? And I'll ask the attorney, is there any order in which we have to vote on these, or can we vote on all as one?
No, you can vote 46A through E.
Okay.
Just real quick, and I just want a clarification. On 46C, we talked about short-term rental, and I know that, I know that that's gonna be, the discussion's gonna continue, and maybe Sue Ann can come up and just kinda, so everyone that's watching on TV will know when there'll be another meeting, what we're looking at to do the parallel track of when it's gonna go to P&amp;Z, when it's gonna come back to us, and I just wondered if you have some of those dates.
Mayor, Council, Sue Ann Donovan, the zoning enforcement officer, for the purposes of this discussion, we are gonna have a public meeting January 6th, starting at 5:30 in the MSC. It will go to P&amp;Z on the 16th for first consideration, by them, for consideration by you following that.
So will you have kind of a draft of the ordinance on January 6th that you can kind of take to these folks and make sure that, you know, they're seeing what we're gonna do, and we're kind of somewhat on the same page? Probably not everybody's gonna get what everybody wants, but...
There will be a draft ready for their consideration on the 6th.
Perfect. And will you get us that beforehand, before the meeting?
Absolutely.
Awesome.
I'll move 46A, B, C, D, and E, unless there's other.
Thanks, Sue Ann. Mayor?
Aye.
And thank you to staff, and Mike, and the rest of the staff for getting through this. I know that was somewhat challenging.
Thank you, Joe. Item 47 is dismissing hearing regarding request from 50th and Douglas LLC, Mac Conley Officer, to rezone property located in the vicinity of 3905 50th Street, continued from August 5th, 2019. Is there anybody here to speak on that?
I'll move item 47.
I would like to add one little piece. I mean, that piece of ground probably is gonna be an issue for whoever takes it over. In light of all the flooding, is that an area where we could put a water retention basin? Would that be of any benefit? I hate to put somebody on the spot.
We can look into that, absolutely.
So then can we, with the amendment to refer to the city manager?
I'll make that amendment.
Thank you.
To refer to the city manager to look into. Sorry.
Yeah. Because we're either gonna develop it, or we're gonna retain one. One of the two that we have to do, so that's what I'm guessing. So it's been moved. Mayor?
Aye.
Good eyes, Joe.
Seven yes. Motion carry.
And folks, that's the end of the show today. Unless somebody else, something else they want to bring up? Great to have you all here. I know you guys were expecting the mayor, but sometimes the B team has to come in. Glad to be here, it's one of the best seats in the House. Because I was...
Nice job, Bill.
Thank you. Mayor, I appreciate that.
Get yourself better, Mayor.
Thank you, guys.